The time has arrived and the quorum being present this meeting the Cecil Township Supervisors is hereby called to order. Again, I ask you to join us with a salute to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Carol, let the record... Geez, it is new. Carol, are you listening? Let the record show the Supervisors Cassiola, Igizio, Fisher, Barney, and Shafani are in attendance. In addition, joined Don De Genousa, our Township Manager, Jack King, our Assistant Township Manager, Sean Bukowinski, our Chief of Police, our Director of Southbridge, Dan Miller, our Township Engineer, Dan Dazeroth, and our Township Solicitor, Gretchen Moore. As you're aware, each time if you have a... This time, if you have a comment you'd like to make to the Board about something on the agenda, please feel free to come up now. We'd like you to come up and use the microphone so everybody can hear. Anybody have any comments? All right, our announcements, the Board of Supervisors will hold their monthly meeting on Tuesday, September 2nd. Oh, wait a minute, geez, sorry about that. Announcements, our Historic Society will meet on Wednesday, September 17th at 7:00 PM here in this meeting room. The 37th Annual Cecil Township Fall Festival in Cecil Park on Saturday, September 27th. Saturday, 11 to 7, and Sunday from 10 to 6. Jordan Tax Services will be at the Municipal Building to collect this year's school tax. Tuesday, September 23rd from 9:00 AM to noon, Friday, September 26th from 1:00 PM to 4:00, and Tuesday, September 30th from 9:00 AM to noon. First resolution, our Resolution Number 168-2025, consider adopting the standard DEP Planning Module Resolution for the Mayview property. Is that Mayview or Mayhew?
Mayhew.
It is Mayhew, okay.
Mayhew.
Property for a small flow treatment facility, it's contingent upon approval from the Washington County Sewage Council. The planning module proposes the installation of a small flow treatment plant as a repair to an existing malfunctioning residential system at 355 Cecil Henderson Road. Applicant is Andresco and Brant Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve that?
I've got a picture of it up there. I think this is the... There's an existing system there, it's malfunctioning, I just saw the visual on it. This is reported from the planning module. The Sewage Authority has... I'm sorry, the Washington County Sanitation Council has made a recommendation to approve it for this, and they need the resolution, which is a standard resolution for approval.
Yeah, that's very troublesome if you have a malfunctioning septic system and sometimes your ground, there's no place to put it. So this is a very, very expensive option, but sometimes it's not an option, it's their only choice. So is there a motion to approve this module?
Same.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For 169-2025, consider adopting the standard DEP Planning Module Resolution for sanitary sewers for servicing the Steel Town Plan Residential Development at 5 Coomer Road. The planning module proposes an extension of the existing public sewer line right at the Township Municipal Building. It's been approved by our Cecil Township Municipal Authority.
Yeah, I just threw the sanitary sewer plan up on the screen there for you to look at. If the extension starts down here, it'll run all the way up the road here.
Dan, will there be provisions, there's people seem like along Vincenti Road that are higher than that, that they might have an opportunity to tap in, does it look like that's lower than Vincenti?
Yeah, I think they're bringing it all the way up to the road.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, this corner, they should be... It's all downhill from there, I think you'd be able to get it very close to it.
Is that the entrance to Glass Hill?
Yeah, the intersection.
Here's Glass Hill.
Is that the intersection of Glass Hill?
Here's Vincenti right here.
Right.
So they'll have a sewer right here at this corner, Tom, there's a manhole right there at that corner. So that could be extended outward.
Because Coomer is all down the other direction, that's the only area that might benefit our residents that aren't part of that plan.
Yeah, further up the hill.
All right, is there a motion to approve that planning module?
Same.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For number 170-2025, it's considered revised plan, Phase 1 subdivision plan of recording for the Steel Town Plan Residential Development. Applicant Keystone 76 Development.
This is a minor revision to the plan that you already approved. Nothing changes in terms of the lot number of lots, any of the road pattern, nothing. This is just a revision based upon the phasing to incorporate all the single-family lots in one phase here in this area that is outlined.
Is there a motion to approve that subdivision plan?
Same.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. You hear that four and one abstention, Carol? Bill. 171-2025, it's to consider awarding the base bid of $228,325 along with the alternate bid $42,300 to independent enterprises for the Coomer Road widening and intersection project in the amount, total amount of $270,625. This project was bid with a base bid for the earthwork and associated paving and an alternate bid to extend the reconstruction of the pavement at the bottom of the road at the bend.
Yes, so if you look at your screen, this is the base bid is here, which is in the darker gray. And the idea here is to widen out. We obtained the easement off of the property owner here. There's a requirement to... We need to extend the storm sewer. This carries water down and crosses over from Burnside Road, takes water down and gets it to the creek. We need to do a storm sewer crossing here to fix. So this was the limit of the base bid. We looked at additional work here with Supervisor Igizio and tried to incorporate it in. We were able to get it in within the budgeted amount. So the project limits will now be, at this point, if you award it, from this point here, all the way up to the intersection.
That'd be a good project. Is there a motion, any questions first on that?
I'm like, no, I'm okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
Same.
I'd make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Carol, you hear, four zero to one, one abstention. For item number 172-2025, it's to consider application from payment number one for the Contract A 2025 Pavement Maintenance Project under the Liquid Fuels Contract to Millian Millian Sons in the amount of $522,756.50 for work completed to date.
Same.
Yeah, this was the work that was done along South Point Boulevard. Work was completed last month, and we're making the recommendation for payment.
There is a motion, there's a second.
I'll second it.
Those, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item number 173-2025, it's to consider application for payment number three for the Contract B 2025 Pavement Maintenance Project under the General Fund Paving Project to Morgan Escavating in the amount of... And Dan, I need to...
This is... We're not recommending this tonight. We thought they would be ready, but they're not. Just, we would propose that this item be tabled till next month.
I make a motion, we table it.
Okay, there's been a motion to table, was there a second? It's moved and seconded. Those in favor to table this motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. Did you need something? Okay.
Oh. Hello?
I'm on the wrong button, okay.
There's a dead one over right there.
It's okay, I'll just speak up.
Who's that dead one laying over there under the...
Sean.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Dawn?
Yeah, Dawn and I can share, we'll be fine. But like in the future, there's two down here that are out. They're laying right here, they're just not in the thing.
For that motion to table, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. Item number 174-2025, it's to consider application for payment number one for the Contract C 2025 Pavement Maintenance Project. The line stripping throughout the township to parking lot paving in the amount of $88,214.72 for the work completed.
We're making this recommendation, we're not up to the full contract value to date. Spent about $92,000 out of the $128,000 that was awarded, and we're holding retainage. So that recommendation is to pay this amount tonight under the contract.
Is it just there's work still to be done, or you're not satisfied?
We're finalizing the funding.
So you're going to be under budget most likely?
We may be under budget, we should have a final buy at the October meeting.
All right, good, all right. So was there a motion to approve?
Same.
It's been moved and I'll second that. Those in... Thanks, Bill. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For item number 175-2025, it's consider approval of application for payment number two for the Lawrence Park Field Drainage Project in the amount of $7,764 to Stewart Contracting.
Yeah, this is... We put a couple additional inlets over there and some additional pipe beyond what was originally awarded to capture some additional water on the third baseline. And according to Jack, the project's working well, everybody's happy.
It sure works well when it's dry, it's been so dry.
Yeah, it's true.
Oh, that... The ball team would be happy.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll approve.
And it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 176-2025, it's to consider whether to... Whether to accept or deny the August 14th, 2025 grievance filed by Officer... Okay. Okay, I understand that we can't use the name, Officer A.
I'll make the motion.
It's a personnel matter. It's been moved?
Is it a motion to accept or deny?
To accept, or to deny, I'm sorry, to deny.
Motion to deny?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 177-2025, consider the hiring of Jared Urum and Jason Boland as laborers with the Cecil Township Department of Public Works subject to terms and conditions of the union contract. Effective start date can be as early as May, Monday, September 8th, or whenever they are available.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved?
I'll second.
And then seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item number 178-2025, it's consider the appointment of Donna Zuzik as representative to the Frank Sarah's Public Library. Miss Zuzik will take the seat vacated by Andrea Reimer, which expires on December 31st, 2026.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 179-2025, consider the destruction of old municipal records pursuant to the Municipal Records Manual. The list of records will be attached to the September meeting minutes as a matter of record. And that's what something that Dawn or manager handles for us, to go through those. And they'll be destroyed by a, what do you call, company?
Shredded service.
Shredding company. So is there a motion to approve that destruction per the manual?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For motion, or item number 180-2025, consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Monday, August 4th meeting, the regular monthly meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Same.
It's been moved. And I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. See, Bill, I gave you a chance and you didn't send me.
Well, you kind of lost so many times, he was like, forget it.
Item number 181-2025, consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Thursday, August 14th, special meeting.
Same.
It's been moved. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 182-2025, it's to consider the general funding invoices from August 1st through August 31st, 2025.
Same.
Like a move then seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. This time, we have the floor. If you have something, I'd like you to come up and at least give your name and address, and make sure you speak into the microphone so everybody can hear.
AC Roland, 52 Sycamore Street. A couple of questions. I'd like some clarity, you guys went through it so quick and I missed the opportunity when you were doing it. On the Coomer Road, are you opening back the part that was closed when the trees fell, where there's the cave-in? No. And two, what's going on with the old building? Did we finally, I thought that was going to be addressed this time, are we wiping it out, Dawn? Or what are we doing with it? And thirdly, what's going on with the pickleball court? We haven't heard anything from them.
I could tell you the two, the first two. The work is going to be the existing part that's where you can't make a right-hand or left turn. You can't turn left. It's going to be widened up there, so it'll be basically a full T-intersection so you can turn right or left, even some trucks.
So they're just opening up that right-hand side of it, or left-hand side of it, depending. If you're coming from here, going down Muse Bishop Road, or whatever it is right there, you cannot, right now, turn right onto that end of Coomer. And it used to have the sweeping piece that came down, that the tree fell and it's caved in.
Let's start over. If you're coming down Coomer Road up towards Muse Bishop, it's the branch to the right. And it's going to be widened up there, so it'd be effective interchange so trucks and cars can turn left or right. Right now, there is...
But it won't be restricted either direction now.
Right, there won't be restriction, even coming from Cecil direction.
From use, or from Cecil, you'll both be... You'll be able... People won't have to go up Burnside to that first driveway and do that U-turn.
Right, right.
Or come in from the other end of Coomer.
Yeah, and then the second one, the Township, the bid was awarded to demolish the building totally, and it's going to become initially a parking lot for a while.
And the contractors agreed to wait until after the Fall Festival to do that.
That's great.
It works well for him.
All right, that answered that, this building's going to be demolished completely.
It's just going to be, and we have a budget on that, do we know how much we're spending to wipe it out?
Yeah, we awarded the bid.
Last month, it was like $45,000, give or take, yeah.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And the third question, I don't know, we haven't... Jack, do you have an update on that pickleball court?
What's going on, Jackie?
What pickleball court?
Mr. Chairman, I can give an update, I'm there paving it. We're paving the parking lots outside right now. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done inside the building before they open. I heard rumor today, he had a wedding book for October 4th, and I don't know if he'd make that right now, the way things look. But he's very excited, I spoke with him today, the owner, you know, about getting the place up and running.
So, but the pickleball court, it's all indoors, so we'll be using even during the winter months, right?
Yes.
You have to join, like it's a... Sorry, you have to join, it's like a membership-based thing. If you look online, or if you drive by, there's like a website you can go on and you can sign up, it's like a monthly fee, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just so you know.
Is it a big monthly fee, or is it...
Truthfully, I didn't look. I'm not very coordinated to play pickleball.
$10 a quarter, so every three months, perfect. Court.
But there was like a membership fee, I do know, because one of my friends was telling me they signed up, where you can pay like a monthly fee, and then you get priority access to, I guess, to like sign up for courts? I don't know, go online, it's, if you go online, you can look it all up.
But it's still on track, they haven't run into any hiccups through us.
No, not through the town.
Frank just said that they're hoping, but you never know.
Yeah, he's...
Yeah, that's what I was saying, they got a lot of people waiting and a lot of money involved.
From what I heard, he has had like 750 people register, so it's going to be a pretty good business. And he will hold like national tournaments there.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. Thank you, guys.
That's super cool.
Candy Wathier, Elm Drive, do you want me to do the same way, list all my questions?
No, I almost forgot them.
I thought so, as fast as she was gone.
Darlene with her butt, you got to work fast.
Okay, so the first one, Solicitor update, can you give us the status of the open records request, by range?
Yeah, she was going to do report.
Oh, so we still get a Solicitor report?
Yeah, she's going to do it, I was going to call that next, for the reports from her and Dawn.
Do you have a specific question about the open records request?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the court's decision was about whether or not Cecil Township won or lost.
It's part of her report, I'm sorry.
The second one was for her, for a status for Range Resources Appeal, like what the court date was, if there's been one scheduled. My next question is, is Public Works, trees haven't been planted, it was approved in April, from Bell Landscaping.
I can ask, I don't know the answer to that question, but I will ask and follow up.
Yeah, because...
I know that there was a concern about being dry in the beginning of summer. Obviously, that didn't happen because it rained basically the whole month of June, but I can ask where we are on that.
Okay, and the other question was, is how many full-time firemen do we have?
We have four full-time and one chief, which he's active.
I'm not counting him.
I didn't know, but...
Count him, he works.
Go ahead.
Candy, to your last, to your last question, Candy, there were trees that were planted on the site. There were just additional trees that Bell Landscaping was going to provide that have not yet been planted.
Yeah, I was talking about the ones that I, that Bell was going to do, that I thought my understanding was, was along like, um... I don't know if you call it the front side of where the open side is of the salt shed, you know, like along that.
Correct, to the north side, to the north side of the building, that's right.
There was some work, I'll follow up, there was some work that needed to be done up there first before they could be planted. And then, they didn't want to plant them in the summer, but we can follow up and find out when exactly.
I think the discussion was whether or not to mound the earth or not. And then we also found that we were able to adjust the settings for the lighting there.
The lights actually are much better.
Right, so, so that...
Each thing, especially with the tree, the leaves going to be falling off the trees.
That brings us back to whether or not we provide any type of mound to elevate those trees, or just plant them at grade level, so.
Candy, the original plan we saw, it was running the whole length of the hillside, we decided, I mean, it came to like a hundred thousand bucks or something. We decided we're not going to do that extensive of a planning, but we have a plan, we're working on, so she said she'll follow up.
I mean, that's fine, if you didn't choose to do that, but the only problem is, is your ordinance requires everybody else to do it. No, it doesn't look very well when you don't even follow your own ordinance.
There's provisions if there's wooded areas and undisturbed areas.
Well, that is no wooded area.
Well, if there's areas between it.
If you're looking at the salt shed, there was...
We know, they're lower, but still wooded areas between there and the house down on McConnell.
Candy, hold on to the podium, I agree with you, like we should...
I mean, I think it sets a bad example.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's just how I feel.
No, I agree.
Required of every housing development, you required of every business. I think it sets a bad precedent and looks bad for the township if they can't follow their own ordinance regardless of what the cost is.
There were some trees planted, we, I, one of us will get back to you on what was planted, what is still owed, and what the plan is for that.
That's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Candy. Anybody else have any comments? I did admit a report, and I think Gretchen has something for a report, would you please give it?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to answer the question on status of litigation, there are several cases currently before the Court of Common Pleas. There are two different right-to-no request appeals. So there was the Range first and second appeal. There were a limited number of documents at the Township Appeal, that's been briefed, and we're awaiting argument, and then the judge will make a decision. The third Range right-to-no request, in which the Township was successful, Range appealed that in its entirety to the Court of Common Pleas. There's a briefing schedule that hasn't started yet, but will start soon, and then there'll be argument and a decision. There was a fourth Range right-to-no request that the Township recently responded to. We think we've complied, and we'll see what happens with that one, yes.
So I feel the need to explain this one, although I explained it on social media. Range argued that they could not access my public, or that they wanted me to screenshot and print my publicly available Cindy Fisher Cecil Township page. And I spent a significant amount of time going through the whole thing, I'm chuckling now because it's so silly, it's funny, going through and taking screenshots and putting them in a shared file to send to them because I do not want to spend taxpayer money, although both Gretchen and I are confident that we would win. Irony of all ironies, on my last post, Range's VP of Legislative Affairs accidentally liked AC Roland's comment on my post, which I promptly screenshot, and then screenshot is like his LinkedIn page. So Range's argument that they cannot access my publicly available Facebook page is now debunked by their own VP of Legislative Affairs who liked my page.
So it was only you getting those requests, Darlene, nobody else was getting the request?
Nobody else on the board has been...
And why is that?
Can you just step to the microphone if you're asking questions? I, I mean, we all have theories about why that is. I just am super stubborn when it comes to this, and I, we could have challenged it, we could have sent Gretchen to argue it. I complied, I sat there for an entire day scrolling through my own publicly available Facebook page and took pictures.
So this is a company that we're supposed to trust, all of their reports, all their water things, all this technology, and yet they can't work a Facebook page? That should be a concern to every one of those supervisors sitting here. That if they can't function a Facebook page, or a LinkedIn, or Instagram page, but we're trusting them, and what happened with the spill?
AC, they have a Facebook page.
I know.
Range has a Facebook page. So it's stupid, and it's meant to cause the Township to spend money, it's meant to agitate me. Honestly, I just find it funny.
All right, we're, all right, we understand, it's really isn't a township business.
That's what that is.
But it is township business if you're not getting a request.
All right, we heard what you said, you want us to, we'd be aware of Range's shortcomings on those kind of things.
No, but I'm asking you directly, Tom, if you got the same request, or if...
She already answered that question, nobody got it.
Nobody got it.
And again, that's not an issue for, it's not a township business, this is our meeting, so.
How is that not township business when it directly affects you, what she's doing to the three of you guys?
All right, you asked and it was answered.
It's all Darlene Barney's doing, she's backing it.
You asked and it was answered. Anybody else? All right, I do have one item to bring...
I do too, when you're done.
Were you done with your report? I don't know if you were finished, Gretchen.
Well, the last, oh, the last item I think you asked about was the status of the substantive validity challenge. And that one is sitting in the Court of Common Pleas. No action. I don't think the Township intends to do anything, so we'll wait to see if anyone does anything.
Can I bring it up?
Sean, do you have anything, any report?
I have a grant that I want to go with. Okay, so those of you that have ever driven through Lawrence, from the Lawrence side of the Township to Peters, know that that underpass over there is a significant issue and a hazard. I am going to, with the Board's approval, work with the railroad to apply for, oh my gosh, I can't ever say this, a multimodal grant application that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. So if the Board is okay with it, essentially, the Township will apply for the grant. I will work to write the grant with the Railroad Association. Then we will award the work to the railroad, who will handle everything. So the hope is to get as much money that we possibly can in order to finally get rid of that ridiculous underpass going from Lawrence into Peters.
Wow, that'd be something.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Good, okay.
And I, I started, I have one thing to talk about, this is administrative item. I plan on calling a work session for November 5th at 7:00 PM to... on calling a work session for November 5th at 7:00 PM to discuss the, the status of our ongoing talks with our fire departments for not only a merger, but the work that our steering committee has been doing. The other thing is, I talked, I talked to every one of you individually, talked about reinstating the fire tax, and I, I think there's general consensus to reinstate the fire tax, but we never got to talking about how to actually fund it. And as you know, our options are that we can set a fire tax and, and take the money from the general fund that's in our...
Tom, sorry, you're out of time.
We could, we could take money that's in our general fund, like we do now, and, and put it into that fire tax, or we could just, it, it could be a tax increase for the fire tax itself, it could be a standalone tax, so we need to start working on that before the budget start, talks start, because this is a very important item, and it's a significant item, and we want to, public input for the, the idea that, to understand what we're doing with our fire departments, and what they hope to see come out of this, and what we